I talked to President Anderson about it. Found somebody who can put that together for us. And I know I was in one of the questions that were publicly available, the cost, which is about fifteen hundred dollars. So, we're working forward on that. As, as promised.
Spencer, the second way that we talked about in June was to be something to deal with the fact that staff was asking for exit interviews. And when we talked in June, we definitely, at least both Spencer and I, can't speak for everybody, and I don't think it's in the notes, and so far I haven't found the video, but Spencer and I for sure both left with the idea that Spencer should create something, which he did. We never talked as a board about the superintendent creating or finding or anything like that. I don't understand why Spencer's survey going out without board approval was any different than Dr. Lookin's survey going out without board approval?
Well, per your legal counsel, I would not comment on any previous surveys. The topic and the agenda is-
Okay, and I'm just gonna say one thing, and I think I'm gonna have a little bit- I thought that that day we had talked about the survey, and I thought the discussion was that we were gonna do a survey together as a group-
The board.
And use the legendary training. That's what I thought. And I know there was not a motion on the floor, so that's all I'm gonna say about that. But I never thought that I, I, we need to get some established points. I'm not against that. I just thought that that was the discussion, that we were going to do one as a group-
Right.
-with the legendary training. That's what I remembered.
We also talked about that as well, yes, but I will tell you that both Spencer and I left this meeting with the understanding that he had the okay to go ahead and create something. And I would love to find the video proof of that, because I think it-
I'm sorry, I honestly don't remember it either, leaving somebody out for a station.
I don't remember motion, so-
But not just having, and yes, should he have brought it back to the board? Absolutely. But that's, that's what our under the, but my point is that, yes, we talked about doing this survey together, so why all of a sudden do we have a survey going out that the board hasn't even seen?
We don't have it going out, so-
No, we're just compiling the emails.
We're just, we're gonna put it together.
Yeah. I think you, that, that-
We have to compile the email lists.
There was something on Facebook or whatever, in the talk, but I thought it was just so that we are going to be doing this, could you please get your emails up to-
Because when you, when you take Power School, like, you might have a mom who has her email on, but you don't have a dad. Or you might have, they just rely on text messages over cellphone.
That's not what the text message looks like. It definitely says, if you want this survey, let the school know by October sixteenth, which definitely makes it sound like an opt-in.
Well, yeah, because you have to have an email address to be able to get the survey. I mean, if you're not gonna provide a ability to communicate with you, then how-
We haven't even talked about how we're doing, how we're sending the survey out, how we're doing the survey. We haven't talked about any of that.
I guess we haven't talked about if we're mailing it out and spending all thousand dollars. I think the directive was that we keep it pretty affordable, but-
We didn't have the directive.
I didn't, I guess I was working on a budget mindset. I didn't think we wanted to spend seventeen thousand dollars in full position, whatever we did on the survey in January.
But in the board report that you sent out, you basically said, we've chosen this survey, we're doing this specific survey.
The company that's running it.
That's running what? We haven't-
So you wanna use a different survey company?
We haven't talked about it as a board.
We need to approve that.
Well, we're gonna bring it to you to approve. We need to get an email list together. Is that, is that establishable? That we need to have all the communication pieces together?
I mean, it would make sense for the board to talk about how we're doing it, but I, I mean, I don't mind this.
But do you want to spend, I guess the question is, do you want to spend, do a big survey with all the mailings and all the thousand dollars that we did in mailings back in January? Do you wanna do that?
When we talked about this in June, it was about a survey that could kind of replace an exit interview.
Okay, so, that, I think the question-
Oh, see, I guess I thought it was an-
And we, by the way, also talked about expanding that, but the June, the discussion in June was talking, we said that staff is asking for exit interviews, they weren't done. We talked about putting a survey together to kind of do that, which is what Spencer did, and then it was-
Okay, I guess the question I have-
I'm excited then too. I know we talked about survey. I thought we talked about a-
We did, we did talk about doing a survey with the legendary-
As part of your legendary.
But we never specified whether it was two separate surveys, whether it was, that's why I asked to put this agenda item, because we know where we're going with it.
I guess the question is, how much money do you wanna spend on the survey?
So, we're just at the point of where we're extending this to staff and potentially parents who are just getting the emails sent to you, and then once we have that, we're gonna actually put it together.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So you don't have, so, we've gotta get the email composite list out.
Except we're not putting it together, because we started with spending fifteen hundred dollars that somebody else did.
Well, that's how much it will cost if we just do the basic minimum. If you wanna go-
If we go with those people, then we could create something ourselves.
Yes, you can customize, and it costs a hundred dollars more, and it will cost you eighteen hundred dollars, or you could go with a totally different company, and it will cost probably more. But if that's what you want, we will do that. I was just trying to get this ball rolling for you guys.
We don't know anything about this company. We don't know anything about the proposed survey. That's why we're talking about this.
The survey questions are not made yet. We are simply trying to find a list to be able, a list to be able to get the people involved in the survey.
What could you tell us what costs fifteen hundred dollars? What can we get for fifteen hundred dollars?
Well, they have a generic that I will bring to you, and I haven't even seen the questions on the generic, but they have a generic that I can bring to you later, that is fifteen hundred dollars. If you wanna customize it, it costs more.
Like, it costs us fifteen hundred dollars to get these questions from this-
And the administrative.
And the administrative.
How about we just stick with getting the emails and things now like the, like it says, and then we probably will need to have a special meeting where we can sit down and talk about, we can look at whether we wanna do different companies, or whether we want the questions to say, you know, a whatever or something. Let's just for now gather the emails. Is that okay? That's my suggestion. That's just mine.
Excuse me, for Robert, can you hear me?
Hey, Marcia, what's up?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. Is it the pleasure of the full board to do a survey? That's, that's the question that I have. Is it the pleasure of the full board-
They would have to approve it. They, they talked about it. This is from their motion. This is their, this is their initiative. And so, yes, it is the pleasure of the full board to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
So, should we do it sometime, then, after we get the emails now, and then we should sit down and talk about, and we can compare, and-
Obviously, I don't have a problem with the school updating their emails. That should've been done with all the paperwork that they had, you know, a month and a half ago, but- There will be no action on the survey until the board is, um, looks at one and makes a motion for the survey. Is everybody comfortable with that? Is everybody comfortable with that? Okay? And all we're doing right now is gathering information to do that. We will do a survey to try to get to the bottom, to try to improve our school, and try to meet our goals the best that we can. Okay? Is everybody good? Everybody good? Okay? All right. With that, we'll back over to the superintendent's report. Okay?
Obviously, it was online. Any questions for me, please ask. I had a-
I'm glad to see that we have a, someone now that is willing to do a halftime dishwasher and halftime custodian, and to do, do the activities in the evenings. That's kinda nice.
Yeah, I have a question. What's the deal with these E-rate funds? I guess I-
E-rate funds are federally available funds that come to you based on, well, it's really dependent upon your free and reduced lunch rate. So, we have, you're reimbursed based on so much, how much free and reduced lunch you have, and they then supply money to you through the federal government. That needs to be spent every five years. You get an allotment every five years. So, you know, this is your fifth year, so if you have, you know, you have sixty-seven thousand dollars right now, um, if you're, you know, Mr. Hass and I talked about that, if we can get our free and reduced lunch up, just like a couple of percentage points, our E-rate funds would go up higher, because we'd been in a different class for reimbursement. And so, E-rate funds are dollars that go into technology. They're made to give affordable access to, and secure access to internet for low-income students.
I think the last time we had some, we were able to use it, especially during COVID, for the kids that didn't have access at home. I remember using that for, then they were able to pay for their connections so that they could, so that they could have their computers and use them at home if they didn't have internet, so.
They expanded that during this time, but we're just only talking about connections and access points right now.
Right, yeah, and that's where maybe we used some the last time.
Yeah, so you're in your fifth year. You have sixty-seven thousand dollars that you have to spend, and that money will then be implemented in the next fiscal year, but you had to have your wish list. We had to have our wish list to the state by the thirtieth of September, and so we did all that assessments to get the wish list there. Which is all done, and that, so we've worked. We're in the process of meeting with the state school, and at the state, get that done.
Well, it's good we got that maintenance done with the sidewalk and the roof. I'm glad that's done.
The roof is done?
Hmm? Then, I'm gonna drive by and see that sidewalk tonight. I haven't seen it yet, so.
Yeah.
That was rough.
I'm sure, I'm sure the staff is happy to have it done.
Very.
And the kids.
Any other questions without approval?
Will it approve?
Now, one other question, yeah, is there a motion to approve this report?
I mean-
For a second?
Okay.
Oh, a second. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and we started that last one. So, in discussion, 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 all favor of accepting Dr. Lookin's report, as you can tell, reportedly say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved. Dr. Harding.
Yeah, I guess I don't have anything to add. If you have any questions for me, or feedback on the report, and what's happening at the elementary school?
How do the, all the fire stuff go?
Yeah, we haven't had our, we haven't had our, the drill with the firemen. That's tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we did have, they came in, and, you know, we'll have a little program and show the fire truck to K one two, but the fires will get the firemen tomorrow. Tomorrow at nine o'clock?
Okay. I'll be excited.
We're still advertising for a parent?
Yeah, it's in the paper. Yes, we really need some help in that area.
We're still on it. Yeah.
I seen it.
Any other questions about Harding? Any else you wanna add or approve?
No, we're good. We're anxious to do-
Curious to see next month how much money you're gonna spend.
I know, and we're anxious to see that too, the money brought in. We're getting closer to finding out, you know, what, what we've totally brought in online and in-house, and, you know, what that means for what money the school will actually get off of that, and then, of course, we committed that money to curriculum enhancement and the primary equipment that was history, that community project. So, we're very excited about that. We're also excited about start testing and showing the results next month, and actually looking at the results ourself to see where students, where they'd be at, where they're in the first month. Mm-hmm. Good.
Okay, I'll move now.
I move to approve the elementary principal's report.
Is there a second? Okay, probably move the second that we accept Dr. Harding's report. Discussion, discussion, discussion. All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Hass?
Okay, so my report was on, I've got a couple of things to add, and it's just stuff from our counselor. Yesterday, October eighth, we had Minutestate come in, and it was college application month, so they came in and helped some of our students get applied for different colleges and put that in order. Tomorrow, we were supposed to have Sergeant First Class Tenada from the North Dakota National Guard come in and talk about Choice Ready. We had to push that back. He had something that came up. He said he was gonna make it up to Mr. Ask. October fifteenth, there's a medical career fair in Bismarck, at the Bismarck Gateway to Science. It's sponsored by Stanford. So, she's taking some kids that are interested in the medical field. They'll need to go around, see people from the field, and get some good exposure. And then on October twenty-ninth, Jim Upgrin from DPI is coming to talk to our tenth through twelfth graders about the state scholarship and the things they need to qualify for that. And then, as I said in the video, I've got Mr. Rask here to talk a little bit about what he's doing in social studies, so I'll move him up.
Guys, go to your-
Whatever you want.
I actually had a slideshow, but there's no way to put it, so I'll just, I'll just talk about what's on it. I do. Look, I was prepared this time. All right. I'm just thinking of you kind of run down the stuff of some of the things that we've done in the social studies department at Harvey High School. So, seventh, eighth grade this year being co-taught by Mr. Shu. I use that phrase loosely. He's doing much of the work. He's doing a fantastic job. So, in seventh grade world geography, the new students have come up here. He's spent his first month or so teaching about the five themes of geography, and he's doing a mixture of regular kind of routine classroom work, using the textbook. We have some new textbooks, and also using project-based learning, so they're doing some of the things that they continued, the continuation of what they were doing with Mr. D. The first kind of project they worked on was they do presentations on explaining different climates, and they were used to sign the climate and how those climates are formed, and what the factors that drive those climates, and that seemed to go pretty well, looking at the assessment results. The new textbooks we purchased, we didn't have a textbook for that class, so the new textbooks focus on geography, and also they focus on a little bit of world history. We found last year, when we started looking at the world history, students coming in, that there was kind of a, there's a lot of time that passes between having world history in grade school until tenth grade. So, in seventh grade, when they're doing geography, they're also using it as a refresher on some of the ancient histories, so they're, they're learning history and geography at the same time, and how they impact each other. And Mr. Shu has found that to be going pretty good, 'cause they're just starting off with Europe, and that's going to be student-driven, so the students get to choose where they want to score first. He's letting them choose, and they chose Western Europe. Eighth grade US history, and that'll be North Dakota history in the, in the spring. Right now, they haven't moved into the projects yet. The first project is going to come up this week, as they're looking at colonial life in the Americas. But he had a pretty fun activity. He set up a Roanoke mystery station activity, which I liked, trying to figure out what happened to the lost colony of Roanoke. So, the eighth graders are doing pretty well. They're learning a lot of note-taking skills, skills that are gonna help them as they go off into high school. Tenth grade world history, so this is the classes I teach without co-teaching, is split into two groups this year. We still do a little bit of project-based. They're expected to also take notes. We use some lecture. I can't really show it. But one of the things I thought we do every year, last two years, I think is really fun, is our first unit's on the Renaissance, and I make them make virtual museums. So, they have to use Google Sites or another site, or another kind of website, where they can make their own website, and they pick a topic. So, some people picked architecture, some chose actual music, so they'd go find YouTube videos of playing Renaissance music, and they would make these websites, and they'd make QR codes. So, if you have a Harvey PS account, you go in my room, you can scan the web, the code, and go to their website and check them out. So, that went pretty well. Right now, they just finished up talking about the Reformation, and we're moving on to exploring the Americas, and exploration as Europeans are expanding out into places like the Far East. And they just finished learning about Magellan. Eleventh grade US history, we took a field trip to Fort Totten. North Dakota requires Native American Studies in the fourth, eighth, and eleventh grade, so Fort Totten works really well, 'cause we get to look at westward expansion. We get to look at Fort Totten as a military fort, but also Fort Totten was a boarding school. So, this year was really great, 'cause we went last year, and they had someone working with the Historical Society guiding us. This year, they actually had members of the tribe working there, so they got to not only see the boarding school, but they also got to hear it from two people whose ancestors had actually, one was, one's aunt and one's grandmother had attended the boarding school, and the students found that to be pretty impactful. They also really enjoyed that they got to go eat out instead of having school lunch that day. So, Fort, Fort Totten's always a good trip. Currently, they are working on, how are we working on them? So, we are just getting into imperialism, and they'll start looking at World War One in the next coming weeks, after we talk about progressive presidents. And POD, we've got two classes left. POD is working on expanding civic knowledge and promoting, and promoting civic engagement. So, I like POD, 'cause we get to do some stuff outside. One thing we're doing differently this year, which is really fun, and we're just kicking it off this week, is they are going to run for president of Harvey High School. Not an actual position, but something that forces them to look at the electoral college process, how to run a campaign, how to come up with slogans. This week, the first thing they did was they created polls. So, if you see emails from the senior class, they did create a poll. It's very short. They're just trying to figure out what kind of issues students are interested in, so they can kind of pander to those students and try to get them to vote for them. Next week, you'll start seeing advertisements probably up throughout the school. We have three different campaigns running, so we had six volunteers, four volunteers and two, or two voluntolds. And then we, so you might see some interesting campaigns. We are going to have a debate in front of the whole school two weeks from now during homeroom period, and then we're going to run this, they're going to actually run an election, so they are going to get trained as poll workers. They will have the students kind of replicate what they'll see in the election. They'll have to bring their activity cards, 'cause obviously they don't have most of the driver's license, and then we will actually set it up where each class gets a certain amount of electoral votes, so we will see if one candidate wins the popular vote but still loses. It might be entertaining. Either way, they seem to be pretty engaged, and they enjoy that. We got a couple of things coming up for the senior class. If you, on Election Day, almost all of them can vote. Almost all of them are eighteen, so we will go there together. They're talking about the different issues. They're looking at the different measures. They're learning about candidates, and they're going to vote according to their interests, so you will see us. The students that can't vote are, I'm gonna at least walk them through, so they see how the process works, so in two years, on the next election in North Dakota, they can vote there, and they'll understand it. In the spring, we're gonna go to the state legislature. I don't know what time yet. Kind of wait to set that up. Last year, we went to see the Supreme Court in action, which went really well, so I'd like to set it up where we can see the state legislature in the morning, and hopefully meet with one of the state Supreme Court justices in the afternoon. So, we got a lot of positive feedback from the Supreme Court last year about our visit. There are some interesting criminal cases in Pheasanton right now. I'm hoping to get them to one of them, to watch one, so I'll reach out to the state's attorney here. We have a new state's attorney I'm not familiar with yet, and hopefully find a good day for them to visit that. And part of POD is I do ask them to find some community service opportunities. One of them is, we usually help out in the winter when it's cold, and they all decide not to wear their coats, with the food truck that comes over to Harvey at the high school, so they'll, you'll see them out there. Usually, it's in March. They'll be out sometime helping out with that, and I'll ask them to find some other opportunities to serve their community. That just demonstrates active, active participation. That's one of the standards. And we have a new class, it's history through film this fall, and this one is really student-driven. I got just a couple of things that they're making on there, just some posters. This one, the students have come up with a list of movies, historical movies, that they would like to watch, and we're doing it by theme. So, they have assignments with this. It's not simply we sit there and watch movies, so they're expected to analyze these, they're expected to come up with critical thinking and research projects based on them. So, our first two movies were both based on the Holocaust, and then the students made up projects depending on how they wanted to, so I got research papers, I got presentations on different aspects of the Holocaust. We then watched Hotel Rwanda, so the kids understood, like, there's a focus on the Holocaust, but there's also all of these other events that don't get this attention. And then the students, there's some in here, one wrote about the Kurdish genocide in the area of northern Iraq and Turkey. Some of them were looking at what was going on in Bosnia, so they investigated some of these more recent tragedies in human history. And currently, we're looking at, like, a quest for equality, so we watched the Jesse Owens story the other day, and then they're expected to journal about that, so they can talk about his experiences or things that they find impactful in the movie, or that might resonate with them today. That's what's going on in the social studies department.
Awesome.
They're gonna have two candidates debate for the whole high school.
There'll be three?
Yeah, we have, and the vice presidents are expected to speak as well, so there'll be six of them.
You gotta make sure you let us know when that is.
It is the October twenty, I wrote it down, I think. I think it's October twenty-second. It's a Tuesday. It's a Tuesday.
Do you guys do some, like, debates in class?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they haven't, we usually, once we start getting into, like, when you go through POD, we break it down through the Constitution. We skipped, usually start with the legislature and go to the executive, but it works better to start with the executive this year, 'cause of the election. Once we get through that, we'll start getting into the Bill of Rights, and we'll look at specific ones, and we usually have debates based on the Bill of Rights. We'll have them look at, like, Second Amendment arguments. We'll have them look at First Amendment arguments, and then, one of the points of POD is how they do that in, like, a civil manner. How do you argue a point in a way that is constructive, and a lot of times, I'll actually have them pick a side that they wanna argue on, and then switch them, so they have to learn to argue about the other side.
So, I, I think that's always good, 'cause, like, even nowadays, like, most people don't know how to, you know, like, you'll be, you know, your terms will be ambiguous or something, and you're not even debating the same thing, and it's like, the logic or the science of argument was always a required class, like, philosophy throughout, like, time, and we kind of abandoned that, and it's like, like, through my college years and stuff, I noticed a lot of that, so I think it's good for this age group to be starting to engage in that as they get to voting age, and so, cool. I think that's really cool.
Perfect year for it, like, all these things.
Yeah.
Good job.
I wanna commend Mr. Rask too for the amount of influence he has on our culture. He, the other day, I was in Mrs. Doctor's room for some reason, and a student was talking about debate, and they said they wanted to debate me whether Michael Jordan or LeBron James is the best player of all time. I said that I was willing to do that, but yet, I don't know, they haven't, they haven't taken me up on that, so we'll see, but it's obviously, his work is, the debate and the report is really something the kids are enjoying.
Chris, any more questions for Mr. Hass?
I have a question. What, forgive me if it was in your video already, but what was the speaker today?
Mike Sweetie. So, Mike Sweetie came in, he gave a talk about kids making good choices, staying away from distractions. Had a really good speech. He was in there for about an hour fifteen this morning.
Baseball dreams.
Yeah, his dreams was his-
Acronym.
Yeah.
I saw some of the pictures. It looked like a lot of the kids came up and got a picture with him.
Yeah, yeah, they did, and he was just, he talked about how he doesn't have social media 'cause it's abstraction, how he went from being one of thirty guys in a minor league baseball room, and saying, who's coming with me, 'cause only two of us are getting out of here, and what their goals were and how their plans were. Some life experiences he had in his young age with losing people to difficult choices. So, like, one of them really resonated with, it was one of his, one of the girls that he knew that was at a party, wasn't drinking, wasn't partaking when the vehicle, and she ended up being the one that was killed, where he wasn't, so just talking about being around good people and good choices, and, you know, if you really wanna dream, you know, will it and focus on it, so. It was, it was really good.
I wanna commend both schools. I think this year I've seen more things on the police book, and things about going on in school, and all different kinds of stuff, so I guess, I don't know who both of you have, but whoever, tell them, I think it's a good job. I mean, we've always had some, but I just think each year there's gonna be more and more, and I like that, 'cause I want people to see good things that are happening and stuff, and so, like, so thanks to whoever you guys are doing it at your school, for doing a good job.
I will, I will let them know. And then, one thing that Mike, I forgot to add, November fifth, Central North Dakota FFA alumni and Fire Insurance is sponsoring a speaker, Dennis Weaver. So, he came and talked to us during our bus drivers thing. He talks about distracted driving as well for these kids, and not just necessarily the technology part, just emotional wise and stuff. He was really good, and so, he's gonna come in. Mike and I figured that would be a good message for our kids. We can't, can't speak enough to these kids about distracted driving.
Yeah.
So.
Good.
Any other questions?
I have another question, but I don't know if it's for you or for Dr. Lookin's, but I noticed when Mr. Rask was talking, he talked both about new books and a new class, and I don't remember approving that as a board.
History through film? I, I don't, we did not approve it, but I don't know if it was already on the list or whatnot.
That was, that was before I came. That was already in there.
Okay, I'm a, I'm a curriculum. We didn't either.
I had a P O on my paperwork that was left, um, gross on that one.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm just saying it's something that should be paid attention to, 'cause I think that happens a lot.
Yeah, I, that was, that was before my time, so, but I'm sure moving forward, that, that counts.
Any more questions for Mr. Hass?
I move to approve the high school principal's report.
Second? Okay, probably move the second that we approve Mr. Hass's high school principal's report. Discussion, discussion.
Mr. Who's?
Mr. Hass.
Oh, I thought you said Mr. Ask.
Oh, I thought you said Mr. Ask.
Mr. Rask. Mr. Rask, Mr. Rask's uh high school report? All time, we say aye. All votes? Yeah, motion passes. Hey, Bronn?
Uh, excuse me, um, my report, I think they got it in the back of this time, but uh.
It's here, yep, it's here.
Okay, okay, good. Um, yeah, just, you know, a few things, touch on a few things. Football, uh, you know, down to one game. Really looks like we could host the playoff game. The first, two thousand nineteen, we were supposed to host, but it stormed and we. Hosted it at Minot. The last was, I think, I believe like two thousand fourteen. So there's a chance for that. Uh, on the uh October eleventh, Military Appreciation Night. Um, the uh Army National Guard will be there and they're bringing a large field for the national, on the hearts field, the large flag for the field, uh for the National Anthem. And uh we're gonna let, the ticket takers will know all veterans, former or current, will get in free. Wrestling, uh we've uh, we're going to need to, uh SWAT has come up and will rent us uh that gym. The uh, the good news is we have a large number of boys and girls out. And we, we knew that last fall that we were going to have, that we had to have a separate girls' coach. Because we're going to have, well, we've got up to thirteen now that are talking of uh. Going off of wrestling and we just don't have the room in the half the weight room that is for wrestling. And trying to jump around practices. When Mr. Rask and I talked about it, it just didn't make sense. This was the only thing that made sense to do. Was to have that building that will get split either between the girls or the boys and we'll utilize both places. Fifth and sixth grade girls is over. Uh, the coach has been approved to be paid. Uniforms are collected in return. The six boys will be starting. The FFA will be going the end of October, twenty third of October to Nationals. Five people attending in that. The FCC LA this year is going to Grand Forks. Last year it was Botno, so it was a one day event. They moved it to Grand Forks, so that makes it two day event. Fifty-seven students and chaperones are going on that trip. So we have transportation lined up for it. Uh one act play, the practice has started. We will come up with a date for the performance in Harvey. Uh we'll do a, one for the community and one for the students where we've gotta sit down and get that figured out. Uh transportation. Our bus routes are full. There's a real good chance we may have a fourth driver for the winter. Brad Arnold is trying to work it out to be um to drive and uh, I think we can work that out. So we're, we talked uh yesterday and we're gonna talk again and see if we can't start that like the sixteenth of October.
It should be nice when the roads are, where it takes longer for your routes, it would be nice.
Yeah, and I think that way, you know, we're, we're, you know, one place I stop, I pick up eight. Another, then I pick up two out on the road. And it's tough, you know, right now, while the dust is coming, parents are coming and these are older kids. You can let me out, we know. Can't do that this winter, you know, so that will help. At the time I did this report, we had first taking a test, uh failed his first one. Wasn't gonna get to go back till November. They called him, had a spot open. He went back, they only made him do is when he failed, he completed it. And he will do his first uh, his first drive with a group tomorrow, taking junior high football. So that's nice to get another, you know, part timer that can help out with uh activities. And then on my report that I add was what just. Since our last meeting, then we had our co-op meeting and just, you know, Dr. Lutens having his report. But it's really not a surprise. I mean, it shouldn't be, isn't it? Two years ago, when that came into effect, you know, we stalled. Mr. Stu and I had each put in a vote and we stalled on it just because. You know, Pheasant put theirs in right away and they kept after us. Come on, you guys, you gotta get it in, you gotta get it in. And we just weren't sure if the three class system was exactly right. I I liked going to the West, however, we knew because they could, they came up with numbers of either one eighty-eight or one sixty-two and a half. And we knew we were going to be on the fringe either way, wherever they chose, and we didn't know if it was the right way to go. So that's where we're at now. Um, we made the decision as a co-op board, which was the right decision. Our option was, we are on our own and Pheasant's on their own. Benson County, Maddox Leeds could not take Pheasant. That would have put them over, New Rockford would have put them over. It just wasn't right to let Pheasant students not have basketball or volleyball next year. So um I have a lot of kids starting to ask questions now in in our school of why, however. I had a basketball pu- a a regular basketball player from Pheasant told me she was so relieved. Because they were worried we were going to split them up. And so at the end of the day, it's about those kids that are playing. And when you look at that group, we're going to. If, if success points matter this year, if Devils Lake does what they did last year. They will get moved out of that region. It's all former Class B schools in that region anyhow. We all played each other when we were Class B two years ago. We played Thompson. The only one we didn't play in a region was Mayville, Maple Portland. Um, you know, the thing is, the region set the schedules, you know, the state doesn't have anything to do with it. So however your regions do it, this region had a system of two or one point. Everybody played each other twice with the exception of Carrington. They never played each other twice. They only played once. I had contacted our region and told them, you know, we will choose the one, uh play each, everybody won, including Carrington. Because we need to keep, we need to keep the towns of Kidder County. And Drake Anamos and New Rockford and Velva and Towner. These towns around us, we need to keep playing because it's, you know, playing Thompson twice does nobody any good. Doesn't do them any good to drive to us. It doesn't do us any good to drive to them. The gate, we will get a better gate playing Drake Anamos than we will Thompson. So, um, so and and they're all in agreement too. They don't wanna, Thompson and Hillsborough and Maple Portland don't wanna come here every year either. So we're, we're gonna be good that way, so.
And then the only other thing is is that it's if we would have been a co-op for these sports, but not for these, and it's like. How can you expect these kids to be?
Yeah.
Friends and teammates here and then against each other. I don't know, and that just.
No, and you know, look like what it's doing over the years now with wrestling. You know, I mean, Pheasant never had a wrestling, they still, you know, we, I mean, they never had that in their school. Now because of SWAT and everything else, it's growing and now probably eight kids are visiting.
I bet, I bet our teams are split almost half and half.
Yeah, and and so you look at how many are wrestling, Pheasant this year will have three basketball players. Freshman, a sophomore and a junior. And so they've got more wrestlers than basketball players. So um, that, you know, those kids all getting along and knowing each other from football and baseball and playing all this, they've. They get together.
Yeah, like we, like we talked about, they they're at proms together, back and forth, they're sit together and you know, and things and it's just so.
For a while now, you know.
Fourteen years.
Has it been that long already? I I knew I was in school still, but.
Fourteen? Is it, are we starting the fifty? This is the fifty?
This is the, this is the fourteen.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, fourteen, yeah.
And then we did talk about the handbook, you know, because we did find that other one and we have agreed that they're gonna meet later on and start. Basically going from page to page and just go through it again and.
The agreement or the handbook or both?
Well, the uh, I should say the agreement, because I know that was a question you had about some things in there and.
Yeah, we're gonna.
We gotta get the specifics to make sure that, that, you know, are the. Like if someone's caught drinking or whatever, you gotta make sure that they match, you know, and things like that. So we did talk about meeting and starting to work on that.
But you're gonna meet Stu and not to do the.
We gotta ratify, we gotta ratify our co-op agreement, and we didn't pass co-op agreement. But um, the impression that um, to the Ben's had is that. You know, we were passing the twenty-one, and the twenty-one degree did not have the fifty percent language for me. And so I talked to her about the fifty percent language and how we ratified the agreement. And she said, completely understand. She's gonna talk to her board and get back to our board members about. If they wanna reconsider the agreement as it was, so.
And then at the end, I think you guys admin also talked about starting some of the, like with, when it comes to the consequences and things or whatever. Some of the admins will get together and figure out do they wanna do, you know, six weeks and all weeks or whatever your things are. They're gonna start working on that and then we'll meet them the next time with them and kind of back and forth to get it all, make sure.
Gonna be more meetings than two a year to get that stuff done, right?
Yeah, it's after that, we're gonna be decide we're gonna do two a year because we've only ever done one a year. So we decided that we should be doing two a year from now on, so that in case somebody else does come up too, that we aren't just once a year. But yeah, there'll have to be some work this year to get, to get the co-op agreement to get it up to date.
We had also talked earlier, I'd seen, what was that, in policy or I can't remember where it was, but they talked about the, was it activities handbook? Co-op handbook, I did, I don't know.
I still haven't been able to find, the last one I can find was.
I've never seen one. I mean, I don't.
I've seen one, but I think I had one, but it was so, I don't remember if it was from two thousand nineteen or two thousand twenty-one. Yeah, and I know you had said that something, I think when I asked, was it Kelly or was it you? One of you had asked. Thought that Derek had it from last year, but I went back through all of my stuff too and I couldn't find it, so. We're gonna have to pull up the old one and that needs to be gone through also.
Yeah, I think that's where, like this next meeting in November. And then it's just continually moving on because we have to, there's gonna be language we have to change in there now.
Yeah, and then we can get the handbook to be the same in both schools and then try to get the agreement to be the same. Yeah, there's gonna be a lot of, a lot of work coming up here, whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else for Mr. Bronn? Um, we'll raise the report too. I would take a motion to uh set this report. And uh second, and what a wonderful job you're doing as well, so. Any discussion, 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 all in favor of Mr. Bronn's report, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, okay. Do we have any committee reports? No committees, committee report, committee can report today?
They just have one special meeting.
Okay, so no, no.
We're trying to get a, we're trying to get calls in the next few weeks and whenever you can, whenever you can.
Yes, that going on right now? Okay, so um, we've got no other committee reports, then I guess um, before I call for adjournment, that the November meeting is scheduled for.
I I have surgery on the twentieth of November and you guys are scheduled. I'm well, I'm not gonna, as far as I know, I'm. Uh, you know, like, but. If you wanted to stick to your date, welcome to do that. I'll have my reports ready to go. Um, I'll be on the phone to be able to answer questions.
It was gonna bring it up and see if we could do it the week before because superintendent evaluation is due and it has to be approved by the thirteenth. So if we would do it on the thirteenth, then we could do that and it's gonna be.
Is there any objections to moving it up a week?
So this would at least be four weeks apart, but the last one was closer.
That's, that should be fine.
Let's just go over because that's two weeks.
Go thirteen, thirteenth of November.
Thirteenth?
Yeah.
Everybody okay with that? And I said, yeah, here, yes. They were rolled in November fifteenth, is that what you have?
Yeah.
Aaron?
Can you put all the meetings on the calendar, all the ones that are already?
Just you guys change them, like there and then.
Oh, but we can always change them on the calendar.
Or how about that whole sheet that we made?
It's already on the count. That's already on.
Okay, I thought that.
It's already.
Well, it's, it's on the website, but they're not on the activities.
Oh.
And and then can we pick a spot to put these documents instead of them being somewhere different every month?
They're all in your documents area, the documents.
This time, this time, if you go on the website, there links them to the calendar. Before you have to go into the documents. If now you go into the documents, you can't find them. You have to go to the calendar to access them. It's different all the time.
Well, I put, I put it on the calendar activity because I, you, I felt like you would want that. That you would want right there where they could just go to the calendar and they could see it. I put that live link there. And then I also put it in the document. It was in both places. I just was there before meeting.
Did you just put it there?
No, no.
Cause I looked through it.
Nope, it's, it's there.
Okay, well, let's make sure.
Yeah, make sure, okay, all right.
Look, you're.
A second, second. Can I probably move in second that we adjourn the October meeting? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the level meeting, October meeting is adjourned.
There we go.
I did.
Thank you, Marcia.